Let me introduce you to the side of the United States of America and two Republic or two states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have looked for a motion to excuse Mayor Ford.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support. Sue, roll call please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Salswedall.
Here.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes, here.
Oh, yes, you know.
And Mayor Protem Chambers.
Here. Or yes.
It's all like here and a yes.
Now we need to roll right.
Yes.
Susie, roll call please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Salswedall.
Here.
Councilmember Barkis.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chambers.
Here.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll start.
Need to set a public hearing for the budget. Do you have a...
I mean, it'll be the next council meeting, so it'll be on the... So we just put it on the side.
Okay. Jim, you made a motion?
Yes, I did.
I'll support.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Councilmember Salswedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chambers.
Yes.
Citizen discussions for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody? Name, address.
Blood type.
Shannon Kennedy, Executive Director with the Lowell Area Chamber of Commerce. And forgive me, as I'm still learning what should be a formal request versus an email. So this is a request to have three trees relocated. Late last fall, there were three trees planted on the north side of the library. I believe it happened at the end of Lowell Light Power Tree Giveaway. What I've been able to piece together is a resident of Riverview Flat Spot. That would be a good spot for them. Unfortunately, it is right in the middle of where we set up booths, Kid Zone, the blood bus and everything for Riverwalk Festival. I was able to see where they planted the Jim Hodges tree recently, like a week and a half ago, and that one is enough off to the side enough that we can work around it. But these other three trees, which are smaller than the Jim Hodges tree, look...appear to be movable. But I just don't know who approves that, how we get that taken care of. I'm willing to find people, time and labor to help move those trees, but I wouldn't know where to go with them. So I don't know what that process looks like.
Rich normally handles all that. He can work with you on that. That should be handling this really.
Okay. Great. Yes, because I asked Dr. Raving with the harbor board and they didn't seem to be aware that those trees went in, so I wasn't sure. Thank you for that, and I'll just take it up with you. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Hey, Rich, well, I've been looking at that, and since it's a nice plot of land for future trees, let's see what that looks like. So when you guys need it for your events or other events, we're doing it right the first time, planting trees or removing them or whatever we do.
Yeah, and I just wanted to state that I'm all for planting trees, and if you're talking...if it was, you know, we want that to be tree space, I would just come up with other solutions for Riverwalk that I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Okay, is anybody else?
I'm Kimball Deluie from eight ten Riverside. I know you've been talking about speeding on Riverside Drive, which is still continuing to be an issue. I have a potential suggestion. So I live on the only block...I'm at the corner of Foreman and Riverside. So I live on the only block that only has two houses on it, and neither of those houses have a driveway on Riverside. And what I'd like to at least propose and have you mull over is to stop Riverside Drive there and have that curve from here, have that curve out the supple, and then have Foreman curve onto Riverside to just break that up. That would...I really believe that would alleviate a lot of through traffic for people that are just trying to beat the system. Because either they're trying to get all the way down to Foreman, which they wouldn't be able to do, or a little bit past that. So at least like you'd mull that over. I think that could be a decent option.
And you? Anybody else? Somebody else moving on to old business? Where move update? Michael?
Yes, so Emma Zavisha from BLDI is here to provide you an update as to what's been occurring out at the site. Also, we are presenting to you the budget, the plan for really the next two years as we move forward at the site. Before she does that, I have been providing monthly updates to people who were...who have asked me for them, but mainly the people who attended our meeting in January with Eagle. For some reason, a number of those emails are bouncing back that I have. I don't know whether or not they gave you proper email addresses or what have you. So if those people...if those people aren't getting them, please let me know, and then I will try and arrange it, and I can even give you the past email addresses. But it is a common issue, because I've had a couple people say, hey, we were on the list and we haven't received them. But then I also get other emails. I send out where people are responding and actually getting them. So if those people are wanting that information, we'll gladly...they can just call City Hall and give their email information, and we'll make sure that they get it. So I'm going to turn it over to Emma, and she's going to just do her quick PowerPoint as to where we're at.
Before, couldn't we just send a letter out to those residents and just say, hey, if you haven't received it, please contact us and we will get you all the current information?
You did that.
How much rather to do it that way than to hopefully see us on YouTube or...
Okay.
Thank you.
Emma, you're up.
All right, hello. I'm Emma Zavisha with BLDI. A quick update on the drinking water sampling before we dive into the work plan for upcoming work. We have sampled twenty-one...or, sorry, forty-one of the drinking water wells. We were unable to reach five owners. So Eagle has determined that we have met the sufficient criteria and have okayed only sampling the forty-one. Of those, thirty-nine were detected below laboratory limits. So that means there were very low or low levels of PFOS detected in those wells. Two of them were detected above laboratory reporting limits, but well below the Michigan maximum contaminant level or the MCL. And the two that were detected above reporting limits were to the southeast of the landfill, which groundwater flow is to the north northeast. So it's unlikely or could potentially be related to the landfill or could be from another off-site source. So that is great data backing out that there is no off-site impact to the drinking water of residents. And then our proposed work plan. After discussions with Eagle, they have agreed that we can move on from the drinking water sampling to continue the sampling of the groundwater and the soil in the...to delineate the impact at the former Lowell landfill. So we have the proposed work plan. I want to go to the next slide. I broke this up into north and south since it is a very large area. So we have proposed a total of twenty-five additional monitoring wells at various depths. You can see there we have shallow, regular, deep, 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 and deep, deep, deep monitoring wells proposed. So some of these do go to approximately one hundred twenty feet below ground surface. The shallower ones are approximately thirty feet. Each will have a five-foot stream, and they will be installed around the...either the landfill site or the adjoining property to the east in order to close the gaps of any data that we already have. So for example, the MW-12 cluster kind of right in this center there, we have MW-12 and MW-12 deep, and we propose a deep, deep because we have impact at MW-5 deep, deep. So we need to make sure that any impact that is flowing from MW-5 deep, deep, that we find it and make sure it doesn't go further than the next step, or if it does, we need to continue going out. Because what we want to do is draw a circle around each aquifer and be able to delineate that that aquifer has impact, but it doesn't go beyond these boundaries. So unfortunately, there are numerous ones in the area, which is why we have to do several clustered wells at various intervals. So to the north here, we have some towards the northeast and to the east. We have a couple to the west, and those ones will be on the landfill property. Those will not be off-site. We are hoping that with the installation of those, we can delineate to the west, so we do not have to go onto any residences on that side. For the ones to the east, we have been in contact with the owner. So far, they have been amenable to us doing work there, and we will continue working with them to make sure that we have access and that they are amenable to the work on their property there to the east. If you want to go to the next slide. These are a couple to the east or kind of the southeast of the main area of the landfill. We are north of the residence that is adjoining to the east. They have a very large vegetated area to the north of the residence. So again, we're just trying to fill gaps to make sure that no impact is continuing to migrate off-site. So this would be the next phase of work. If you want to go to the next slide, this kind of gives the whole picture here. And the two addresses to the west there are just the addresses that are closest to the onsite ones that we will be doing. So we plan to not be on the property at all, just close to it, but not actually on it. And this kind of gives the whole picture of what we're looking at, making sure we fill any gaps around in a big circle around the landfill. We have twenty-five, again, total at various intervals, and the proposed plan is to sample for volatile organic compounds and for the PFOWA PFOS constituents. So there are only certain ones that laboratory can detect, but we plan on running all of those. Any questions before we move on to the proposed budget? Okay.
Ask a question, or do we have to come up? Or can we ask a question?
Yeah, you can ask a question.
You've got the two yellow blocked out Deer Haven and the arrow. What does that signify?
So the arrows just signify that those are the addresses for those two houses and that those will be the ones that are closest to any wells we install on the site, but we do not plan to go on any residences at this time apart from the adjoining to the east.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, we can move on to the budget. So this budget is broken up into several years. So the first one is the remainder of this fiscal year, which is through June thirtieth. Task one is the drinking water sampling, which as we talked about at the beginning, that is complete. So that...that is all bundled up nicely. Eagle has approved of it, so we are good there. Task two would be the monitoring well installation and groundwater sampling. That is not applicable for this period. That will start starting June or Jan...July first. Sorry about that. And task three is Response Activity Plan or RAP and/or Eagle correspondence. And the task three for the rest of this fiscal year will just be working with Eagle to get that work plan approved so we can get started on the next phase, of course, once it is approved by City Council. All right, and then fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six will be very similar. We broke the drilling up into two separate events, so not everything would fall within one fiscal year because it is very expensive to go out there and drill with hubble stem rigs. So task two, monitoring well installation and sampling. That includes field and office expenses, including the actual monitoring well installation, which we have two staffers budgeted for up to fifteen days. The monitoring well sampling events, which we have two staffers budgeted for four total days. Sample collection, preparation, equipment expenses, and project management. For the driller fees, this is where you'll see the bulk of the fees come in. We have the driller costs for the monitoring well installation, approximately twenty-five total. So we're going to break that up into two for the two different fiscal years. So that includes the driller fees for fifteen total onsite days. And then task three is the preparation of the RAP and Eagle correspondence, and that's just development of figures, tables, report development for Eagle review along with their correspondence, just to make sure we're on the same timeline. And then as we work to get that RAP put together, the remainder of those costs are, of course, the next fiscal year. If you want to go to the last fiscal year. Again, this is very similar. Task two will be exactly the same as task as the last fiscal year because we broke that directly in half. So again, monitoring well installation, that's fifteen days for two staffers. Sampling, it's two staffers over four days. And then the driller fees, again, we have fifteen days for use of that hubble stem auger rig. And then we associated laboratory fees. And then for task three, it's a little higher for this fiscal year as we work on really ramping up to get that RAP completed and sent to Eagle for their review and eventual approval. Now note that if we do have exceedances in areas, we may have to step out again and do additional work before that RAP can be submitted. So there's a chance that additional work will need to be done. This is kind of a best-case scenario where as we step out, we don't find anything else, which based on the analytical to date, there is a very good chance. But we can never say until we actually get out there and see what is present. The driller fees also include drum disposal. So each event with the hubble stem auger rig produces quite a few drums of soil cuttings, and those will be included with the driller fees, the drum disposal. And then if we want to go to the next slide, this kind of shows the whole budget that was provided to Mike, and that will probably have been passed around if it hasn't already. Just basically sums up everything that I said in a nice little table.
We budgeted high range for the budget. I always...to be conservative. We budgeted two thirty this year, and then we would budget two thirty-two for next year. And that's the general product.
We knew this was going to get expensive, so.
And then there's one side...one slide left of questions, and those are pictures actually from the former Lowell landfill site. So just kind of an idea of what the rig could look like, all the drums, some soil sampling, and some monitoring balls.
Good as if that...we didn't find any detections or what's your report, so we didn't have any exceedances. And obviously, we still have investigation to do, but something pretty positive and part of finding, but we still have to...
Right.
Do our due diligence and make sure that we're dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's. There's any other questions?
Eric? I just remember that we were going to offer water filters to all the residences, and I'm just curious if that's been done, or at least offered them, if they were interested in water filtration, an RO system?
We never agreed to that unless there was a need to. And the state is...and the state would determine whether or not we had to provide that. And the state has never made that determination that we had to do that.
Eagle and the Department of Health and...
Human Services.
Health and Human Services have determined that as of right now, it was a very low risk to drinking water, and that they do not believe that that is needed.
Good. Yeah, I'm going from four months ago, so.
Yeah.
To anybody else here from there tonight, from the development that's experiencing this, and where do you think we are at with giving you the information and are...do you feel we're moving in the right direction to meet your concerns or address them, or what else do you think we can do?
I'm from the Deer Haven Park Association. I think you've been...Mr. Murgens has been giving out a lot of good information through emails that we've been getting and we've been distributing through our association. But I will pass on that if they want it personally to make sure that they get with his office. This isn't a problem that's ever going to go away, so the reality is what's happening today is not what's going to be happening next year and the year after that. So I think it's going to be constantly a fluid kind of situation for everybody. I do know that some of the residents on the east side of Deer Haven Park, trees have blown over back there, and there's all sorts of landfill items that have been brought up through trees. Any way that, you know, the process, they could clean that up a little bit so that our residents don't have to look at...
Yeah, that was brought to our attention, and we, you know, now that the weather's getting nice, that's something that we will go on to.
Can I get your name for the record, please?
Jeff Hoakes. But no, all in all, I think we've been giving good information. Given the circumstances, it's nice to be very open about everything that you're doing. Will this be like most of the stuff you put on your website? Would this presentation be also put?
Yeah, I'll have to put it up.
Okay. Thank you.
And if anyone does have questions, they want to reach out to me personally, my email is up there. Leslie DeBoer is our company president. She is the senior project manager, but the day-to-day staff can go through me. Thank you.
All right, moving on to old business. Pete, Bob Rogers, Mayor Officer of the Skate Park. Good evening. Do you need my name and address? I don't think I've done that before. One three one nine Cumberland, Lowell Township. So I was here a couple of months ago, I think. Time flies for the skate park. So, oh, good. We do have a PowerPoint presentation. I do these all day at work, so I really didn't want a PowerPoint, but this has all the information in there for you. So myself, Dan, Lexi, and Jessica Barney were the original three back in 2021 that started the project to redo the skate park. So we can go to the next slide. The current park, this is what this slide focuses on. So way back in the day, 2007, some students and parents were talking about a skate park here in Lowell. 2009, they raised $20,000 and bought some metal and wood ramps and equipment. City of Lowell actually did the cement slab back in 2010, and the equipment was moved from Richards Park to the current location of Boz Road. Yearly maintenance is done through some things that I coordinate every year, but that equipment has been really hard to maintain, the plywood and the metal. At the bottom there are the complaints that we've heard. There's quite a few, loud, unsafe, and the trash accumulation. I heard there's...might be somebody kind of hanging out there for a long time. We've also heard that it's not challenging, not interesting. People actually drive past Lowell to go to other skate parks, so we wanted to change that. Other complaints, no shade, no benches, no lights. It's also not accommodating to beginners, scooters or bikes. And one of the biggest complaints that we've heard is the fence. The dog park has a fence. We understand why there's a fence there for the dog park. The skaters have not liked the fence being there, so it just feels like they're being contained or whatever. So that's one of the complaints that we have. Next slide. Got perfect sun coming through there. I don't want to complain about that. But this is the location for anybody in the audience or council members. This is the location of Boz Road. This is what the park looks like now, the cement slab with those three things on there. It's pretty empty, really nice cement slab, but those things have seen better days. So go to the next slide. The ramp on the right side is still there, but it's hollow now, so there's kind of some weird space underneath it. And also the, I think, the box on the left. Some of the...we've heard from Rich and some others that people have made things and brought it to the skate park. The city have removed them because it's not supposed to be there, liability and some other reasons. But that was there quite a while ago, and we took a picture, but it's no longer there. But the skaters in the community, or who knows from how far away, have built things and brought things there because they wanted the skate park to be different. Next slide. All right, so this is the slide focusing on the new park. I'll go through quite a bit of this. So we hired...we hired Grindline. They're out of Seattle, Washington. We've been working with them online, virtual meetings to come up with some concepts. If you go to their website, not now, but a little bit later, if you go to the website, there you have some awesome skate parks, amazing skate parks. But keep in mind, those are multimillion-dollar skate parks. We've had some complaints from people...not complaints, concerns, whatever the word is, for some people looking at our concepts thinking, that's nothing. There's hardly anything being changed, but that's because, well, we'll get to the dollar amount a little bit later, but the website shows their capabilities for sure. Next is...it's going to be all concrete, steel, and granite. It's going to be safer, quieter, a lot less maintenance for it. And the design is going to be interesting for the flow. We've had a lot of discussions for that, accommodating to BMX bikes, not motorbikes, BMX bikes, scooters, rollerblades, skateboards, and also all skate levels as well. I guess the ramps that we have now are quite tall for some beginners, and a lot of children haven't been able to skate on anything there. So that was one of the things that we wanted to work on. So the new one is going to be very accommodating. Timeline? I looked...I've got over 300 emails in my skate park folder, and I'll look...the first one was July 21st. I think Jessica, Dan, and I started talking about this way before that, but I wanted to put a date in there when we started. November 7th of last year is when we reached our $120,000 goal. To me, $120,000 is a bunch of money, but when it comes to skate parks, it is not. We didn't think we were going to find any big skate firms that were going to work with us because of the low amount. Grindline was actually very accommodating. They said it's going to bring them back to their days that they...when they first started to do small skate parks. So they're actually excited about it. They're trying to stretch the budget a little bit for us as well. April 22nd, the Parks and Recreational Committee or Board, what it's called, LEA, they approved that to then get forwarded to the City Council, which brings us to today. So I'm asking, and you'll see the concepts here in the next couple of slides, but I'm asking City Council to approve the concepts. Also, we're thinking about some kind of donor recognition, some kind of plaque that lists the donors in order of monetary amounts. We're also...Hooper Printing has agreed to do a construction banner temporarily before and during construction, just to list or to say what's going on. We also are asking for...we actually have some people donating some shade trees and patio. So we're asking for, I don't know how you want to do your proposal, but to get the concepts approved and hopefully some kind of flexibility with that. And I'm hoping you would empower the DPW for the placement of trees if...we don't even know how many trees we're going to donate, but to have them approve that for that. So, I mean, I can come back, but I'd like to have all that done if I could. Also on the concepts, you'll see two stretch goals. We wanted to...we're asking for in-time donations, and we wanted to have some concepts added into the concept, additions added into the concepts, so that you could approve that now just in case we do raise additional funds. just in case we do raise additional funds. So you'll see those on the additional slides. One is, alternate one is $26,000, alternate two is $29,000. July 29th would be the start of the construction. They're, they scheduled five weeks. They actually told me three to four weeks because of the size, but they always have a buffer in there. We're also going to have the fence get removed, and I have volunteers, or the city hopefully can do that. We're also going to propose relocating the ramps that are at the skate park to Richards Park in the ice skate arena. And we're going to power wash that and hit that all on ice, too. That's what we're proposing. And also, I have two members from the original team in 2007. I've asked them to find some opportunities for what we're going to do with that original equipment. They're actually reaching out to some communities to see if they would like that donated to them. I did want to mention, I don't have it on slide, it's kind of new since I did that, but we do have some in-kind donations already. Charlie from Sumac Modern Landscapes, he's in the audience. He's actually worked on some donations for topsoil, hydroseed, the trees, the patio, the fill gravel. We also have Grand Rapids, no, I'm sorry, Great Lakes Granite is donating 14 feet of four-inch thick granite to be put into the skate park. I've been told skaters like to skate on granite. There's something every day, but that company is donating that granite, which will be, it's already incorporated into the concept. So I just wanted to call out some of the in-kind donations that we already have. Next slide. So other than the small design team and Grindline, Leah's been helping with the big design team as well, so, and the Parks and Rec team. Not a lot of people have seen this. So this is the concept that we've come up with. The sidewalk is at the top right. That goes to the parking lot for the dog park and the skate park. So that kind of orients you. We're looking north. Alternate one on the top left is that $26,000 addition. Alternate two on the top right is the $29,000 addition. And the dark rectangle in the middle there is going to be the granite. So that's one of the perspectives. The patio would be on the north side. One thing I didn't mention earlier is that Grindline did take into consideration that, I'm not going to do this, but maybe somebody else wants to take the lead on adding to the skate park. That could be done to the south. So we wanted the patio to be on the north. We wanted all the features to be accommodating to additional additions to the skate park. So the patio that we're proposing is on the top. Next slide. This is looking from the north. I did not do the patio in perspective or scale, so apologize for that. 18 by eight, or eight by 18 is the patio proposal. But this is looking south. You can see those two additional additions. So if we don't raise those additional funds, then it'll be just what you see there. If we raise only $5,000, we have to come up with something. What are we going to do for 5,000? So we might make something taller, or we might have alternate two be three feet instead of the whole length. But that's something we'd like you to let us take care of, how much we, depending on how much we raise. And one more slide. This is the overhead view. This is giving you the height of all the obstacles or features that we have there. And you can see where the granite ledge is also. The patio again is not to scale. Each square is 10 feet by 10 feet on that map, and I did do that properly. That's the last slide. If there's any questions, I do have Alan and Charlie in the audience that I can tag if you have any skating related questions. I don't want any of those. Any questions?
Yes. Bob, are you proposing, so what we need is, when you move it to Richards Park, it's only for a temporary period of time.
Yes, and then we want to donate the equipment to some other community, but it's only while this is under construction.
Okay. Okay, good, because I was under the pressure, and I knew everything was going to go over at Bowles, and I did have a couple of residents reach out, and they're like, it's not coming back to Richards Park, is it? So I might not have known.
And you could say it's not going to go there temporarily. We just, we don't know where else to put it. And I would like those that skate in the community to have that equipment somewhere.
I think that's a reasonable request during the summer times.
Three to five weeks.
Yeah, I think that's--
Unless you have some other location, some other, I mean, it can go anywhere. We just want that on the poster so that when skaters show up, they can see where they can go.
We can, we can look at, we can look at that if there's maybe another option we could. But I don't have a problem with being a temporary location for a period, short period of time. That's, that's not an issue.
Yeah.
I had a question regarding the fence. A few years ago, I used to take my dog to the dog park all the time, and I would talk to quite a few of the parents that were there. And they really liked the fact the fence was there because as they're skating, their youngsters seem like they were in a confined thing. Now when we move in that fence, and now it's free for all for three, four-year-olds to just go. So I'm a little concerned about the reasoning why they don't like the fence and why they remove it from a safety standard. I understand Danny may feel boxed in or something, but--
Yeah, that's what I've heard is the, more the psychological, you know, they're looking at the dogs that are running around, they can't get out, and they're in a fenced area, and there are people kind of thing.
I mean, to me, as a parent of young kids, I take them to parks all the time that don't have fences around them. In fact, the playground right across the way opens up to the parking lot pretty close. So for me, taking my kids to the skate park, there's more danger than pulling down and getting their knee than--
Just bring it up.
I mean, I understand, especially with the lake right there. Like, I understand the idea, but then the idea would be to put the fence around the playground as well, or even most of the lake there, so.
Very good point.
Yep. The other thing is, is I sit on our board, and we're going to have a meeting next week, and we have some funding, and we have some babysit trees available, and maybe this might be a good one to consider donating a tree or two to your cause as well. So we'll discuss it on Monday. I think we'll meet next Monday. So I'll let you know.
Yeah, we do have some donations for some really nice trees, but I mean, if there's more room for trees, I know they have to, people have to mow around the trees, which I do that at home, I don't like that personally. But when you're skating here, so I've heard, it's just bright, and there's no, there's hardly any shade. I think there's one shade tree. So adding some shade trees, we looked into shade structures, but those are 30,000 plus. Plus, they have canvases that might have to come down every fall and put them back up and storage and everything. So we're trying to be accommodating to all that. And so I, more trees, and there might be a couple of other trees getting moved somewhere, so.
Wasn't much trees.
Shannon, do you have a question?
No, I was just going to suggest that with the removing of the fence, I think it makes it more appealing to those middle school, young, you know, freshman, young high schooler age group, which I feel like we have a number of play parks for youth, for younger age, but I think the removal of the fence will help give middle schoolers a place to go.
I'll make an motion to approve the concept with the possible add-ons.
I'll support it. Sue, roll call, please.
Councilmember Salzweigel?
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Good, thank you. You're good to go.
Thanks, Bob.
Eat or build. Moving on to new business, Gold Star Memorial dedication closure. Michael?
The city has received a request from the Lowell Showboat Garden Club for the dedication of the Gold Star Memorial on Main Street just west of the Riverwalk on Saturday, July 27th, 2024. As part of their request, they would like to close M21 that day from 10:00 a.m. to noon. They informed me that when they had their Blue Star Memorial some years back, the event was held on the sidewalk, and there wasn't enough room. They would like to place chairs in the public roadway for the event for two hours. During my discussion with them, I informed them that the city cannot unilaterally decide on long-term closures. We informed them that we may close the road for about an hour during a parade event, but we are uncertain if this would be allowed. Chief Hurst followed up with MDOT and was informed to submit the request two weeks prior to the event, and they will decide whether they would allow the closure. East and westbound traffic would be diverted on Main Street at Jackson and Hudson. Both the chief of police and I appreciate the dedication and significance of the Gold Star Memorial. However, we are concerned about the length of time for this closure. It is on a Saturday in the summer, and there will be traffic constraints resulting from this closure. In addition, with people, our normal practice is we have people walking down the street for a parade, and our parades are usually 30 to 45 minutes long. This being two hours and people sitting on the public roadway, it's going to require a number of resources from the city to harden that area. Because as you all know, before every parade, we always have a car going in the middle of the parade. And it's very, it's very concerning to both the chief and I. We would have to put heavy trucks around it and so forth just to protect the people because we're, we're just really concerned about this. Especially for the length of time. But we also told them that we would at least submit the request. And normally, normally our normal practice is we bring these to you for approval before we submit them to MDOT, and then MDOT would either grant them or not. I'm not going to provide a recommendation on this because of the concerns. That being said, I did ask Dave Thompson to be here tonight. He's not. Nobody from the garden club is here. I mean, if we want to wait for somebody from there to come, you're more welcome to table a request. We do have time. But I, and normally, like for an event, like normally we would, we don't normally charge officers' time and resources for the Memorial Day parade, so I wouldn't do that here. But I can tell you that on a Saturday, this is going to be a significant amount of overtime for DPW staff, police staff. Also, having to bring out, we're going to probably have to bring out the heavy, the front, the big snow plows and the giant Bobcat and front end loaders just to secure the site, just so we make it a statement possible. But I, I think two hours is a very long period of time. And I'll be honest, I am not comfortable with it.
Is there a reason why they want so much of the street?
Because they want to have their presentation on the sidewalk at the memorial. And when they had their presentation last time, they had everyone on the sidewalk, and it wasn't enough room. And they don't, ideally, don't really want to go to the Riverwalk because it's away from the, from the, from the memorial.
So, I mean, I'm not control moving forward as it states right now, but we've closed parking lots in the past for different occasions and different events, and there's a parking lot right there. And one side of that parking lot we can block out without interrupting any traffic whatsoever. I think that would be a first saver option, and allows them to have two hours, and it's a pretty big space.
Right. You're talking about the parking lot to the south of there, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so like between, like Cliff's Store--
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
--there and that side, because that's all one way. So if you block that off, like for parking an hour before, right? You can have people parking in there, close that section off, and not have anybody on the sidewalk or on the street.
Right.
So that's maybe an idea.
How much room they need, just block that, much of that parking lot off and say--
Yeah, I mean, they could go, they could go, you know.
They could be anticipating. I mean, last, I mean, I didn't, sorry, I didn't attend it, so I don't know if it was 50 people, 150.
What did they, they said about 50 to 60?
75 people.
Yeah.
So my question to you too, because when we do this for like the parades and such, and you have to submit, turnaround time from the state can be--
It's usually pretty quick. Once I, once I get the permit submitted, and that website is terrible to use, so it takes me hours to put the permit in, once I figure out how to do it again. Usually within a few days, I'll hear from Kerwin down at MDOT. He said, we get approved online, then I have to, he sends me a form, I have to get signed. I send that back to him, and then he sent me back the actual permit. So it only takes up to a week at the most to get approved. I did call him about this two-hour closure. We have people sitting in the roadway, which makes me nervous because we have to harden, like Mike said, put big trucks around the actual event with an officer there to watch it. Plus, we have to have two officers at each end of the, where we get the detour to direct traffic. And then we're going to have people coming in off of the side streets that don't know about it. The next thing you know, we got a traffic jam down here. So it'd be, for me, it's going to be a big headache, and for Rich.
Our likelyest idea--
I just think there's a more creative, safe way to go about it.
Yeah. Because, I mean, we asked for them to come so we could have this discussion. I don't know the reasoning of the lie, they didn't, but I just, two hours is a long time to shut M21 down. And if MDOT says no, they have one week to figure out what else to do. So it's a time crunch. I try to give them something they can prepare for and move forward with, and certainly.
Susan Stevens, 610 North Jefferson. Actually, that parking lot is, is a good choice for another reason. It's a Gold Star Memorial for Gold Star families who have lost family members. That's, the Veterans Memorial Park is right there. So that, is it ideal? No, but their spot isn't ideal. Parking lot's, I think parking lot's a good choice.
Because if they're going to ask us to keep 75 people, 275 people safe, we know from, we've all been at the Christmas parade where we get the Rome car coming down, right? And we have little kids and everything, and they, they just look at you like, well, what do you mean? I'm just trying to go to McDonald's or wherever, right? So, and the cost of, in my opinion, the cost of extra stress on the DPW and our police department, we just hit budgets, and we're trying to save as much as we can. Probably not that much in the big scheme of things, but I would like to see us just have them, have Mike get ahold of them and just say, we're willing to give you as much of that parking lot as you would need, this is the reason to save. What do you guys think?
I was hoping that maybe we had a section of leechers we could possibly set there, too easy in, easy out, so we try to set up 75 chairs. You know, that way it's, it's, you know, make something like that possible. I know somebody's getting some new leechers. I don't know what it would take to pull from point A to point B, or hopefully they're hereby--
I don't know.
I don't know what else we have, but there's other options.
Don't we still have some old benches? The old park benches that were up and down Main Street. When we got the brand new ones, we took the old ones, and I believe they're behind the Kingdom.
We don't need leechers at Recreation Park.
Right.
No, I'm talking, yeah.
You're talking about the old benches.
I'm thinking about leechers that we put out in the summer concept series.
Yeah, so I'm just, maybe that might be something easy to do, set up, pull out, get on, and, you know, maybe hasn't done it in a period, so.
And did you say the proposed date was July 27?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and I know Craig here can speak to this, and it's outside of the city, but that's Ballisburg Village Celebration, where expensive advertising will be done to bring people into town, and hopefully while they're here, they'll shop and dine elsewhere. So a two-hour road closure will make it hard to get to the celebration.
Good point. Catch up, Dave, I did not catch that, so.
So would somebody like to make a motion that we have Mike reach out to him and offer the parking lot instead of M21?
I don't think there's an alternative, but the parking lot.
So you're making the motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll park.
Okay. Motion in support, Sue.
Councilmember Salzweigel?
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.